Good evening, large crowd. We are going to start this evening with the cannabis. Will take about fifty-three seconds. So would someone like to make a motion on the agenda for cannabis?
I make the motion that we adopt the cannabis board commissioner or local cannabis control commissioners meeting.
As written.
As written.
Second.
Second, motion in a second. All in favor of approval of the agenda for cannabis control, please say aye.
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 Aye. Close, no one. Approval of the minutes of the November twenty-fifth cannabis.
Motion to approve those minutes, second.
Motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Heather, you said aye, right?
Aye.
Yes.
Nobody opposed. Now, we are here to consider the application renewal. Or integrated license grassroots Vermont, which is the one on Lover's Lane. Right, pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve that. Second.
Motion in a second to approve the renewal. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, no one? Public comment on cannabis control? None.
Motion to adjourn cannabis.
Wait a second.
Second.
In a second to adjourn cannabis. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. They should all be so easy. Select Board. First thing would be to adopt our agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to adopt the agenda. Any additions? None heard. All in favor of the agenda as posted, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close, no one. Select Board remarks, such a big crowd tonight, so we, I don't think I even have to tell you all to be respectful, because I see that it's a very respectful group here tonight, so.
Everyone, thanks for making the drive and.
Yeah, what I would say is, thank you for coming out on such a wonderful evening, and I am trying my best to make this meeting be short and sweet, so that you can all get home safely. And because all of our meetings have run so late lately, we have not been home from one of these meetings before ten P M. So. Any other select board remarks? None heard. Moving on, reoccurring matters, minutes from the November twenty-fifth meeting?
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes from the November twenty-fifth meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any changes or corrections?
No, thank you, Charlene.
All in favor of approval of the minutes of the November twenty-fifth meeting, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Close, no one? The minutes of the Brandon Budget Advisory Committee meeting with the Select Board. I know there's a change there. Ralph, give us the change.
Yeah, on the, on the agenda, agenda addition, it says a motion by me and seconded by me, and I believe it was seconded by Heather.
I don't remember.
Sounds.
Ralph and Ralph.
So. Any other changes to the minutes of the advisory committee meeting? None heard. All in favor of approval of the budget minutes, please say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
One abstain.
One abstain. Ralph and Heather.
Think we did.
Ralph and Heather. We didn't do a motion?
I'll make the.
Hey, make the motion.
Somebody else second it, okay?
You got a second.
What's your motion?
To approve the minutes.
Oh, yes, yes. I make, I second the motion to approve the meetings of the budget.
Okay, and then it's a three vote, three yeses and one abstention. And now we move on to the warrant. Do we have a motion on the warrant?
I make a motion that we approve this warrant to pay our bills.
Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
Questions. I have a question to Mr. Hopkins, just for second page, Silaway Networks has two bills, one for seven sixty-two, once for seventy-five dollars, and I'm not remembering exactly what Silaway was, so. Why don't humor me and.
Sure, Mr. Chair. So Silaway are our external I T vendors. There are information technology folks. So the seventy-five dollars was an actual service call that they did. There was a office, the oldest of the office computers was having memory issues, and they did some diagnosis and assisted us in getting some additional memory ordered for that. And then the seven hundred dollar item, that's pretty much the town's carrying cost at this point. We have, we were over a thousand dollars on this for a while. It's a monthly fee. Basically, all of the stuff that when we were getting into computers, we used to buy software packages and so on and so forth. You don't do that anymore. You subscribe to things. And so this is the subscriptions to Microsoft Office Suites and to firewall stuff and antivirus stuff and to have them do some monitoring for us and be available to assist if there's any kind of malware and things like that. This is, it's a reduction from its high point, but it's still a pretty high carrying cost.
It's the only question I have. Anyone have any other question? None heard. All in favor of approval of the warrant for four hundred sixty-four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and two pennies? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Close, no one? Pay the bill. Town manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did submit my report in advance, and this time to break out the departments, I thought I might just give you that one-page printout from Nemrick that has the departments just with their, their total lines. And that way, there's no kind of like arithmetic involved on anybody's part. The number that we would be hoping for to be on pace would be forty-six percent. That would be at this point through the year, eleven twenty-fourths through the spending. We are actually, if you take the actual expenses and divide by the actual revenue, we're at forty-nine percent. So that's the pace stuff. And then I do have on the third page there, there's a local option tax fund update where we received the November payment, and it talks about the amounts that are needed tonight, which are later agenda items in terms of the one percent tax transfers that we'd be asking for to close out the paving and to put the down payment on the replacement highway truck. I don't have any updates today other than I did alert the select board over the weekend to an officer who was injured in responding to a call. And I did speak with the chief this morning, and I spoke with the officer himself. He came into the office and we had a good talk, and he has been cleared to return to work, and so he's, he's, he's okay.
Thank you for that update, Seth.
Yes.
I have two, two questions regarding the your report. The third little paragraph, town staff members and the insurance, and the police have rejected to change insurance carriers. So they're, they're not moving to M V P, they're staying with Blue Cross?
That's right. So we asked them to consider a change. We had negotiated the contract with them, and it specified Blue Cross. It didn't say Blue Cross or M V P, which the other contract we renegotiated at a similar time did specify that the town could choose Blue Cross or M V P. So we asked them on October seventh if they would be willing to switch over to M V P, because that would be less cost to the employee for their contribution and less cost to the town for its contribution. And didn't really hear much back until very recently. And so now we have heard back that they elect to retain the Blue Cross coverage and not switch to the M V P, which means unfortunately that the town is going to manage two different health insurers for a very limited number of employees in each of them now. But it's certainly within their, within their rights.
It will cost them more and us more.
Yes.
And we, and we have to maintain to.
Right.
Thank you for clarification there. And down near the bottom, where it says the Select Board will not meet the fourth Monday, which is December twenty-third. Just let the public know that. And it does say we will meet on the fifth on the thirtieth to pay bills. Probably not a meeting, but we'll see if it's a meeting or is it just a bill paying or a meeting meeting, you think?
Even if it's just bill paying, it's going to be a special meeting.
And.
I don't have any planned agenda items to bring to you.
We had, Tim had emailed that he can do the thirtieth, but he needs to be done before seven fifteen for another commitment. So he was wondering if we could have that meeting on the thirtieth at six P M or six thirty, so I want to poll the board. It's, to me, it's great, but.
I think six P M is fine.
Six thirty? Okay, so let's, we'll go with six thirty. Is that all right?
Yep.
It will be done, or Tim will have to be done. Okay. You make note of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the town manager?
I just got one. I mean, I, I heard it the last meeting, I kept thinking about it, couple of other people have asked me about lower Carver. I wasn't where we had a lower, I wasn't where we had a lower Carver. I thought it was Carver to excuse me, Syndicate Road.
So that, right, it's all Carver Street in Brandon. So there is no Syndicate Road in Brandon. And I was using a casual term of Lower Carver Street to differentiate it from the portion of Carver Street that is, starts in town and goes just beyond the railroad track, which is paved and has houses. And then the point at which it becomes unpaved and we don't do any winter maintenance, I wanted to differentiate that to the board. It's, it's officially Carver Street. The, the southern portion of Carver Street.
And I have been remiss in reaching out to Pittsburgh, so I will be doing that.
Okay.
Assume that some of the feedback we had, we were not looking at changing the classification at this point, and we just wanted to see if there was any other interest or signage or other ideas of change, so.
And it won't make a difference.
Any other questions of the town manager from this front table? Met questions for the town management, the public?
Just really out of curiosity. Is the choice for, or is the preference for Blue Shield for that group coming from maybe better coverage in the plan versus cost of the plan?
So one nice feature in Vermont about the limited number of insurers that are operating and offer plans is that the plans are very closely comparable to each other. So the town initially made the change from M V P to Blue Cross on several staff members' recommendations that Blue Cross should be a higher quality of insurance. Over the course of the year that we've had it, I think the folks who had made that recommendation previously did not find that their experience was measuring up to what they remembered from years and years ago. And so I believe the plans are, are nearly, nearly identical in most respects.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
I can't really speak to what, you know, is motivating the desire.
Yeah.
I wasn't part of that discussion.
Other questions from the public for the town manager? None heard. Moving on, Community Development Bill Moore.
Thank you. This is my report for December the ninth. Brandon Idol, twenty twenty-five registration has opened. The tryout concert is held on, to be held on January the tenth, seven P M. Limited registration, so please sign up today. The themed concerts with the backing band will be on February the fourteenth, March fourteenth, April eleventh, and the final is to be held on May sixteenth. This is a lot of fun. This is our, I want to say our fifth year. We started the COVID year and had to stop, obviously, but it's just been a really great way to engage the community, to pull people in. We have some really talented singers. It's something that's a net gain to the town as far as finances go, and it's just a great way to spend the winter upstairs at the town hall, listen to some talented musicians sing. So I recommend, if you know anybody ages sixteen and up that are interested, please sign up at the rec department website. I have one change on my written report. The Little Otters Wrestling Registration has not yet opened, but they will be starting wrestling practices once a week on January the twenty-eighth. Adult Cornhole will be back in the town hall on Tuesday evenings with Commissioner Ross Edmonds, starting on January the fourteenth and running through the end of March. We're once again collaborating with the Brandon Free Public Library to host a winter quiz series, Quiz Night series. The Brandon Inn will host on Sundays at six thirty for the month of January. February will be held at the Neshabie Golf Club in the Lilac Inn will be the location for March. This is a free event for folks eighteen plus. You can register your team of up to six online at brandenpubliclibrary.org website. And again, it's a lot of fun. It's free. The, it acts as sort of an economic boost, I guess, for these locations that maybe aren't seeing a lot of people on a Sunday. We get fifty to sixty people in these locations for an hour and a half, spending money and having fun. And it's a lot of fun, so. If any interest at all, come on down. That is my report for today.
Quiz night, do you have to have a team that goes every single week, or can you just?
I mean, you can sign up and then not show up. We will boo you if you don't show up, by the way, but.
My experience has been you make a team, and then you just, if somebody can't make it, you're like, hey, let somebody else fill it, and it's super fun.
Other questions for Bill Moore?
Just a comment that Brandon Idol is way better than you think. Be prepared to make a T-shirt for your favorite contestant. Give your kids a couple bucks because they like to put the money in the jar to vote. It's like super, super, way more fun than I ever thought that would be. Meaning no offense to the original idea. Once I saw it, I was like, this is so fun. It is our favorite. The kids love it.
Questions for Mr. Moore from the public?
Thank you. I'll change it. Yeah, thank you for letting, I didn't think to change it. Thankfully, we have the redirects going on for the next two to three years. But yeah, no, for the label, I appreciate the, actually, we have an intern that's working with us at the town offices, and we're having him go through the entirety of our front-facing brain of Vermont dot gov website to check for broken links and that kind of thing. So it's good to have people checking that. Thank you. It does. I'm gonna. Vicki.
Does someone want to talk?
Vicki? You want to unmute?
Did that just go on Karen, or has it?
No, I don't know.
Oh, okay. So maybe it wasn't like. It might have been that it's.
Vicki, can you hear us? Did you mean to raise your hand? If you have a question, you can also type it in the chat as well. I can see the chat. Cecil just said, please speak into the microphone with a smiley face. So we definitely can see the chat too, in case your volume isn't working.
Okay, why don't we try to get that? Does anyone else have any other questions for Bill Moore?
Vicki, you've typed yes.
Yes.
Is that yes, you have a question, or yes, you want to unmute? Question, I'm reading it. When and why do we change the name of the rec department to Community Development? The name of the rec department has not been changed. We felt it was a better way to, I guess, to co, collect my titles into one sort of thing, but we do have a rec department. We do have an economic development department, and I do, as a part-time basis, serve as deputy town manager, build the community was a way to do that, but it's not changing the name of the rec department. Do you have a follow-up? Is another department? Did we add another department was a question? No. There's a, oh, I got to see this, Seth.
If I could just speak to that for a moment. So we didn't change any staff numbers or department names or missions, but what we did early on is we started gathering the departments into clusters that I'm calling mission areas. So we put highway, buildings and grounds, the tree warden and the wastewater, all in a mission that's called Public Works. We put the town office administrative staff, the assessors clerk, the bookkeeper, H R, the town clerk and treasurer in administration and finance. We put the police, emergency management, E nine-one-one, and animal control in public safety. And we put recreation, economic development, and property codes in community development, because they all have something to do with that shared mission of either growing the grand list or growing the community or growing connections within the community. So these four mission areas of Public Works, Public Safety, Administration, and Community Development are just ways for us to usefully organize the existing town staff and town departments.
And I just wanted to add too, I changed the name of my report in the beginning of September from Recreation Department to Community Development, because I'm also reporting on economic development well, instead of submitting another report separate for economic development. It'd be easier just to have one report.
All set? Okay. Moving on. The boundary line adjustment at Jones Drive, that is also yours.
Yes, thank you, Doug. So I passed along to you a map that we have that shows, it's an old map back from when they divided up what was the Brandon Training School into these different parcels, and something that we, that we noticed or was brought to our attention by some, by a party that had acquired the property that was ultravation, Charles Foster used to be there, it's at the top of Jones Drive, was that there's a chunk of land that was assumed to be their land that if, you know, in their process of doing their deed work is shown to actually be a chunk of land that was the towns that we did not know we owned, that we've not been maintaining since nineteen ninety-three, when they developed the, all the different boundary lines. It seems to be next to a right-of-way that we also have, but we don't maintain. Jones Drive is plowed by the owners of Jones Drive. The landowners have shared that. So this new owner brought this to our attention, asked about the possibility of acquiring that land. And I wanted to bring to the select board for consideration, and they were actually interested in just squaring off the land. So if you look at the existing and flip over the page, the existing shows the teardrop, I guess, of a, of a lot. And we, the proposal would be to square off the lot as though it looks, looks like it should be to the edge of the fifty-acre right, the fifty-foot right-of-way that extends from the circular part of Mulcahy Drive, that is Jones Drive and all the way over to there. Ask the select board to consider this. Our highway department has no use for it. It was a portion called Fave Circle on the map, but again, it's not shown on any of our towns. Even the part of Jones Drive that is paved, that's used by the folks on Jones Drive, is not even on our map, because we don't maintain that portion of the road.
Is there anything that we could develop?
No.
So we, I just need to be clear. So we currently, we own the teardrop.
The teardrop would be, yes, is ours on the map, according to their deed research.
And who, who is going to end up with it, the?
Where it says Kurt's Family Properties, that's the property where I hate to do this for folks that aren't familiar, haven't been here for forty-five years, but was, I don't know what it was at the training school, but I do know Charles Foster had a front office there, and then Ultravation operated out of there until they moved to their spot on Tubbs. They've since sold the property, or purchased a sales agreement with the Rutland County Humane Society to purchase that portion of the property. And then, so the what I would suggest to the select board is to consider giving that portion of the property to the Humane Society, and the bump that would straighten out at the back is the Compass Center, what was the Compass Center is now owned by Tanner Romano and Naylor and Breen for their, they came before us about a month ago to guard to their workforce housing development.
Man, it's a proof positive that it's just purely accidental when this kind of stuff happens, because this has now happened in the town's favor and not in the town's favor, that we've discovered little parcels that everybody assumed was one thing, but was another. I, I don't know about giving it, but selling for not a huge amount of money. It, I'm not like saying we got to make bank over it, but I think just as a matter of principle, it's probably, as a matter of, I don't know what, like setting a precedent is what I mean.
My, my question is, what are the, what is it? I don't, I'm not sure what buildings are in that area. Because I'm, I don't know. I mean, I know where Mulcahy Drive is.
I, I just wanted, to be clear, I'm not asking for action from the select board tonight. I want to introduce this to you guys. I mean, like, ideally, you guys would do a site visit, drive by, take a look at it yourselves. Have any questions that you might see. I mean, getting there and visiting the piece of property, I think, will make it fairly clear to you that this was a mistake, that this piece of property looks like it belongs. They maintained that property for, I mean, thirty-one years. That piece of property was maintained by the folks that own that parcel. Under the, you know, idea that they thought they owned it, the town was willing to say they did own it. Kept it mowed, some pavement on there. It's where they had trucks. I mean, it's, it's quite clear that it's not of any use to the town in its current state.
I just wonder, is there a way to do the same kind of drawing on, on a Google Earth kind of?
Is that, what is the parcel?
If you go to the Tax Maps, BrandonVermont.gov or TownofBrandon.com, both still work. Go to Tax Maps. At the top, there's Emboldened G I S.
First, we go, you just Google Town of Brandon. So do we want the G I S map? Thank you. You can tell I'm not the tech.
I'm just wondering, you know, like what's, what's there? What's, you know, what are the plots around it? Because I, I can't tell by this.
So, so I can, as, as you guys are looking for the, the picture, picture of it, what was the Children's Growth Company, but then there's now the Rutland County Parent Child Centers at the top of Jones Drive, and as you go further down, there's Building J on the right, which is in a derelict condition, that has storage, I think, for the, used to have storage for the Brandon Town Players, and is also, it's owned by McKernan Group, and at one time, there was a fiber factory in the front half of it. If you go further down, at the end of Jones Drive is the Compass Music and Arts Cent, was the Compass Music and Art Centers, now shuttered, owned by Naylor and Breen, is being developed for workforce housing. On the eastern side of Jones Drive is what was Ultravation, a long piece of property that extends from Mulcahy Drive to the edge of thirty-three, thirty-three Jones Drive.
Circle. This right-of-way, that's Fave Circle?
That's what's called Fave Circle, yes. But there's, the right-of-way is actually to the west of what is labeled as Fave Circle. Well. Yes and no. As a nonprofit, no, but that piece of property, if it ever were to move out of being with a nonprofit, yes, but it would increase the property that possibly could be taxed.
It would go.
I'm sorry, just I.
It's a little bit of, a little bit of it would, wow, geez, a little bit of it would go to Ultravation. No?
The majority would go to Ultravation. The majority would go to Ultravation, the, there's a little nub that sticks into what would have been the. Straight, uh, it would have been three thirty, three thirty-three Jones Drive. And again, like I said, an introduction to you guys, I highly encourage you to visit this. Not ask for any action, you actually don't have your full select board.
Alright, so when do you, when do you want to have an answer by?
Oh, that's, I guess, I mean, it's. It's not of urgency, but I think, you know, the quicker we resolve this, the better. I wouldn't say it's something that would need to be handled at your next meeting, which seems to be a special meeting, or maybe at your next regular meeting. The second Monday in January.
I was just wondering if we could have like a Google map drawing, you know, of the buildings and then. Highlight approximately what it is on it and then you all kind of get it, I think.
I can absolutely do that.
Okay.
You have somebody in the crowd ask question?
How big is the parcel?
Actually a half an acre, about five, four acres.
There's a question on here from Cecil, I'll read it to everybody. Has that landowner openly been treating this property as their own? Have they suggested that they might be entitled to it as a matter of adverse possess possession? It's, I haven't mentioned that to them, um, the, the, the act, the interim executive director. For the Rutland County Humane Society is who I've been dealing with is Mimi Brown. Were uh, spent a lot of time working for the state as an Act two fifty coordinator. I think she knows that that's probably a. Probably something that she could consider. I think she was hoping that potentially the town would. We give that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I assume if we have always assumed they went with one of these properties, it's just a matter of adjusting the line, but I just. Like to kind of have a handle on it. Okay. But are we, can we uh, make it so that we can all investigate it between now and have it in our first January meeting? Could you? Target that, make sure it's on that agenda?
Absolutely. And, and in the interim, I'll email you my best approximations using photo snapshots of the uh. Use the, the online thing, you take a snapshot and send that chunk to you. Just in case, so you guys can see it, what it looks like with the approximate map overlay. They say not to quite use that, but it's pretty close.
Cecil has one other.
Cecil's message says you might want to just run it by legal. If they have an A P claim, might be better just to. Give them the land than risk a clear title suit.
But claim deed it to them so that we're giving them whatever rights we have to the property, we're giving them with no legal fees. That was going to be my suggestion after. Understanding what the piece was. Okay, thank you Cecil. Moving on. Item seven, accept the assessors errors in a mission report. Would you like to explain that at all?
Mister Chair, uh, so these are um, items that have changed on the valuation. Between the lodging in June and the date that they did the audit of it, which was uh, last month in the middle of November. They have three changes um, that are on the errors and omissions report. Uh, the first one would increase the grand list. Uh, there was an exempt property that is um, no longer fully exempt. Uh, the second one, M T Associates is um. Previously it did not have the tax stabilization. As part of it and now it does. So it's taking money off the grand list for the town's purposes because of the investment for the tax stabilization policy. And the last one is a mobile home that was destroyed by fire. So if you add up those things together and then divide it by one hundred, you have um, what's up on the top in the third line. Which is a decrease in the grand list of three thousand five hundred and eighty dollars. So there.
One we have to do every year.
Right, we do it every year.
Just to have changes.
Yep, and they just request that you review this and that you sign it and then they will stick it with the grand list.
Pleasure the board? We do it every year.
Make a motion we approve the mistress adjustment.
Second.
Motion in a second, any additional discussion? None heard, all in favor of approval of the uh, errors and emissions report? Please say aye. Both, no one? Now we have night, item eight, approval of one percent transfer, the money we. Transferred. Couple of weeks ago for purchasing of the highway truck. This requires our signature, so it's basically already done and already spent and was in our warning this week, correct?
Yes, uh, the town has taken delivery of the truck. The truck has been used to plow snow. The truck is satisfactory. The driver likes it. And this is to authorize the treasurer to make the transfer from that fund to the other fund.
Oh. I was wondering if it was Tom that. Does it have stickers yet?
Pleasure the board?
I make a motion that we um, allow this transfer of funds from the one percent fund to. Where she wants it.
Be to the general fund. We have a second.
Second.
Your motion in a second to finalize what we already did in the warrant. All those say in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both, no one? Moving on to number nine, more money, uh, proof, uh, transfer of thirty-nine thousand five twenty-one. Towards the road paving project.
Chair, so on this form, you can see that that figure of thirty-nine thousand that's on the warrant is broken up into two separate. Kind of transactions at the top. So I'd wanted to just be very clear with the board about what's going on. So the board had previously approved, well initially you approved up to a hundred thousand dollars for paving projects in this past year. We were able to um, use. Some carry forward money from previous highway projects, which was the Arnold District Project. So. It turned out that we only needed thirty-five thousand dollars. From the select board's vote. So we, we did that several meetings ago. The work was done. Um, at the time that it was ready to make the transfer from the highway carry forward. The town treasurer brought up last year's um, encumbrances, we used to call them, or reserved funds. And um, it was highlighted that the select board last June had taken from that hundred two thousand dollar figure. They had taken seven thousand dollars for um. Winter, sorry, seven thousand dollars for tree removal and ten thousand dollars for winter sand. This is uh, detailed on the third page of my manager's report under the one percent fund discussion. So what it did is it reduced the amount of money available from the carry forward by seventeen thousand dollars and that's why the second item is there. So together they make the thirty-nine thousand dollars. The initial part of twenty-two thousand is to enact the board's vote of up to thirty-five thousand. So we didn't need quite all of it. And then there's a second vote to cover that amount that was previously assigned by the board at, at its June meeting.
Pleasure the board?
I'll make a motion, we approve the fund transfer in the amount of thirty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-one dollars and thirty-four cents.
A second.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Both, no one? Number ten. Going to recognize Lauren Tesaro. Uh, you do have to come up to the speaker. Um, I wanted to preface this, I know you're going to give us a basic uh, brief introduction to. Americans for a clean atmosphere. I know your desire is for us to write a letter to the governor.
Sort of, um, well, how much time would you allow me here?
I'm gonna. What I'm, what I'm going to tell you realistically is that we do not uh. On any basis, write to the legislature or to the governor, asking them to do special things. I know you want to have a petition in town.
I have a petition already and my understanding is that on the town meeting day in March, if um, petitions are signed by five percent of the population. Um, that the um, articles can be approved by the board and then sent to the Capitol for. More um, notice and attention on the issue. Is that, do I have that right?
So my, my understanding in talking with town clerk and I'll defer the town moderator, uh, but in talking with town clerk, she confirmed five percent of the voters. Which is about a hundred and sixty-five voters. Um, but what that would do is that would put the, put a question on the ballot. For the voters to vote on. Yeah.
Then the results of the vote would be sent to the.
The results of the vote would happen at the election and the board would either, you know, the question as it's written here is, shall the board demand? And so if the voters direct you, then yes, the board shall demand. And if they don't, then.
Right.
You would.
So that's what I was trying to clarify is, I don't want to really spend a whole lot of time tonight because unless the voters tell us to demand. Uh, and, and do that action, we can't, but I know that you came out on such a crappy evening. If you wanted to do a really like five minute overview as to what you're talking about, we would have a, an idea, but. You know, it really depends on the board. We can't do anything and tell the legislature or the governor. Uh, from the town of Brandon without the voters telling us that, so.
Well, this is a really important issue that I would like to talk a lot more about and I find it such an important issue that maybe. Something can be done by the board and I think that we do need to start at a small democratic level. Because I have reached out to my legislatures, I've reached out to the governor and I've received no response basically. So this is where. We have to start apparently and um, yeah, I have some visuals here, so I just.
Just let you know, when you walk away from the mic, no one can hear you.
Kind of those people are hearing. Do I mean to hold those up? Can you tell me which one you want me to hold up?
Here is one and here is another. Alright, so I will try.
Looking good though.
Looking good.
Yeah, so um, my, thank you for this time. My name is Lauren Tesaro. I live in Lester and I first want to say that. Um, I don't represent any political parties and I'm not an expert on this subject. I am a mother and I have a homestead with my family. And so I'm outside a lot and my attention has been drawn to the sky about this issue nearly every day for about a year. So I'm not sure if anybody else has noticed the type of things that are going on in the sky, but I'll explain briefly nearly every day. If perhaps one scenario, you start with a blue sky, along comes these persistent jet contrails. And another and another and another, and the sky eventually is hazed out. Um, with this material and I've seen very strange cloud formations, all kinds of things. So I started to ask questions, what's really going on here? And I received um. A letter or it's a fact sheet, contrails versus chemtrails from the state of Vermont. And one of the things it says on there, I did want to read it from the paper. Basically it says that. Um, persists, these contrails can create manmade serious clouds. They can um, block. Um, incoming sunlight, so they can cool, have a cooling effect. Or they can tr- trap radiative heat, so have a warming effect. So. Right there in the fact sheet, it explains that these contrails are changing the weather and the weather is defined as. The conditions on that specific day. So contrails come, haze, we don't have sun anymore. This happens. Um, once a week at least, it's really a constant situation and I've grown very concerned about it. So. According to the fact sheet, this is just sort of a coincidence. Here come the contrails, the haze happens. Oh, well, it's just water vapor. That's what they say. Now I'd like to talk about intent. And I'd like to bring up the issue of geoengineering. So that is the intentional. So that is the intentional manipulation of um, earth climate. Okay, thanks. Um, so geoengineering is the intentional manipulation of the earth's climate by um, by humans. And um, there's a lot of different um, technologies that go under the guise of geoengineering. Um, I'm sure many people have heard of cloud seeding, which is where they put silver iodide in clouds to make it rain and. Um, this is really very common. Thirteen uh, U S states have um, weather modification guidelines and programs even. Colorado was a very uh, one that a lot of people know about. They make it snow, things like that. So Vermont does not have any guidelines. Around weather modification. So I'm hoping it'll stay that way. Um, my main concern right now that. This is geoengineering that's happening right here, because it's happening so frequently and we're losing so much incoming sunlight. And um, soil is becoming a lot more alkaline. There is elevated levels of barium and aluminum that. Weren't here ten, twenty years ago. Um, so yeah, the soils, the forest soils are getting a lot more alkaline. Um, and what I really like to bring up is that in uh, June of two thousand twenty-three, there was a congressional. Mandate to research solar radiation modification. So this is a framework that was put out by the White House last year that says that it's absolutely necessary as a means of. Um, controlling the global warming that we um, haze the sky and block the incoming radiation. So this is a very serious proposal, so serious that um. There are so many patents about this. There, oh, in for geoengineering, John, there is over three hundred and fifty U S patents. Um, and so many of these are related to the solar geoengineering. And what they want to put into the sky is reflective particles and those are metallic particles, aluminum. Um, and also some radionuclotides that they want to put in there and these are listed in the patents. And I know patents, there's plenty that exist, they don't get put into use, but these patents are owned by um. A lot of military defense contractors and so this is a serious proposal. And so what I would like to do, and there's also um. I guess thirteen states now that have put some legislation in to ban geoengineering. Um, there's a couple of counties that have banned it. So there's a big movement right there now of citizens saying that we do not want this technology to happen. So. I'd like to see um, Vermont start somewhere to say, this is not for us and we want to deal with climate change in a. A lot safer, healthier way, not having um, metallic particles sprayed, tens of thousands. Of tons of these particles is the legitimate suggestion on fighting climate change. So I think that's really just very foolish. We can't fight pollution with pollution. I think that um, Vermont really. We pride ourselves in our beautiful environment, um, our farmland. So that's what we really need to um. Bolster and support as we come into this time of climate change. We can build topsoil. There's just a lot more that we can do. Than inviting um, the spraying of toxic chemicals into our environment. And if you see these um, displays, I think it's already happening. And yeah, there's really so much information out there. There's documentaries. There's a lot of this anti-geoengineering awareness now. And I'd really would encourage everybody to look into this because it's not just hearsay. It's not just something that might happen. It's a very serious proposal. And I think it's a very dangerous and I'd like to see um, some awareness, some discussion around this and yeah, eventually some uh, legislation. And again, there is no, let me say this, there's no regulation. So because there is thirteen states that already allow. This um, stuff to happen, zero regulation, zero oversight. And although we are monitoring um. Uh, pollutants, they measure it at such a rate that it's um. It's in a, a micro meter rather than a nanometer, so they're not even able to capture. The particulate that they may be spraying already or will be spraying. There is no civilian oversight. There's, there's no awareness around this. So. Um, yeah, so my hope is to get the five percent of signatures before the town meeting and bring it um, in front of you and have it approved. So.
Yeah, that's your, that's your road forward would be to get a petition and, and the only other thing I could think you would say we could offer is if you're. If you want to have a meeting that you advertise and whatever, we could maybe get to a place that help, help you get a place to have a meeting.
That'd be great.
Whether it be in this room or something, you know, if you put something in the paper and people want to come out. Listen and help your petition. I think Mr. Moore could probably be the one that would be best to facilitate a location.
We do make this uh, town hall space.
Own rule, uh, we do make the town hall available for public media spaces. Library has media space. There's all kinds of media space around town, you know. Depending on the size of your crowd, so.
Thank you.
I hope you understand that, you know, we don't. Get into political stuff that are local.
It's not political, it's environmental. It affects everybody.
Yep. If you got question, question.
Are we the questions? Uh, Vicky De Zorda, um, asked, what is your contact information?
Um, I can give you my personal contact information, but then I represent a group that's, um, Vermont for a clean atmosphere, and they have, um, an email address, and I have a flyer for everybody I'd like to hand out. Um, and I really would encourage everybody to look at this White House document from June of twenty-three that is the congressional mandate, because I think this is the most serious we evident, evidence that we have that this technology is coming, um, to our skies, if it hasn't already, which I believe it has.
Mr. Hopkins.
So Mr. Chair, um, Lauren provided, um, some documents after the board packet was assembled, so I can add the documents to the town's website on this meeting. Uh, listing under the, you know, additional documents kind of thing, and so they can be there for, uh, folks to read in full.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
One sec. Oh, there was just another question online too.
I apologize, because I tried to listen very closely to what you were saying, and, and I appreciate all your, your commitment to it. And what you're describing sounds very offensive to me. What I missed in your, in your, um, presentation was if we would consider this to be offensive activity, if I would. Who are the offenders?
Um, well, the offenders are, so the, uh, um, it's really, there is a lot, there's a lot to it, so the patents are owned by Google, uh, Raytheon, a lot of people, so these are the people that own the patents. And really, it's National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association that approved the permits to, um, all you have to do is fill out a one-page permit, I actually have the list of all the, the, um, weather modification technologies that are allowed. I think it would be pretty shocking to all of you if I could read that list. So officially it's NOAA are the ones, and NOAA received funds from Congress to research solar radiation management. And it, when they say research, I want to mention that in the document, it says, um, in real time outside, it's not like it's some controlled environment. So I would say that this comes down to the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association. Now, I tried to figure out, I reached out to them, where are these experiments to being done? When are they being done? And there's no information available for that.
Thank you.
There's one more question, Doug, um, the question is, uh, what is the precise text, the proposed question? And I have it here, that was a part of that packet, I, I'll read it into the.
You can read the article.
Sure, uh, so, uh, this is the, the, at the top of your gosh, petition, they, they had a brain cramp. Uh, we, the undersized legal voters, uh, hereby petition the select board of the town of Brandon, Vermont to place the following articles on the warning of the annual town meeting to be held on the fourth day of March twenty, uh, twenty twenty-five. This petition is filed pursuant to VSA twenty-four subsection two six nine one. We certify that we are presently voters that have that town, the articles one and two to be placed on the warning to be read. Article one, shall the Brandon Select Board demand the Vermont Governor and Legislature to commit and sign into law the following, quote, environmental preservation as enacted prohibits the intentional injection, release, or dispersion by any means of chemicals, chemical compounds, substances, or apparatus within the borders of this state into the atmosphere with the express purpose of affecting temperature, weather, or the intensity of sunlight. Article two, shall the Brandon Select Board request the Agency of Natural Resources Department of Environmental Conservation Drinking Water and Groundwater Protection Division to modify the Environmental Protection Chapter twenty-one Water Supply Rule as follows, quote, under six point eight inorganic chemical monitoring requirements, add a new section, six eight, six point eight point two, all community public water system suppliers shall make yearly monitoring results available to the Vermont citizens for the following. Table six dash one, contaminant standards, section three, primary inorganic chemicals, barium, uh, under two milligrams per L liter, maybe, uh, mercury, uh, under, uh, point zero zero two milligrams per liter, maybe, uh, section eight, uh, radionuca, radionuclides. Oh, it says nucleides on this, um, strontium, uh, ninety, under eight parts per centimeter, I, I slash L. Uh, then six point one three secondary standards, table six three, secondary contaminant standards, aluminum under two, uh, milligrams per, again, we got liters. And that's, and then there's the other language with regard to the undersigned, respectfully request the article be acted upon by all legislative voters, and then the rest of the stuff are signed.
Yeah, and if I could speak to, um, the drinking water for a moment, so the heavy metals that are tested, uh, right now under the EPA standards are, um, lead and copper. And, um, I have, one of the members of the group did research and said that, uh, that the state under the direction of the EPA has not, um, been directed to test for aluminum in drinking water for twelve years. So I did not reach out to the, um, fire department who I knew provides the water for, on the town, so I do need to find out if they have tested for it, but they have not been directed to. And if you go to the drinking water quality page, you know, state of Vermont, um, they list everything that they test for, and these, um, aluminum, you know, a lot of these things are not tested for, so just to be sure that's not happening, and it needs to, so. Okay, so thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, and good luck having a uh, getting another meeting.
Uh, so. So while we're here, our tech savvy town manager posted the entirety of what, uh, Lauren sent along, it's now a part of this meeting's record in the, uh, under the agenda, or and under the select board packets, and this is like board meeting.
Thank you very much, Lauren.
Thanks.
We move on to public comment and participation. Our group of public present. Yes.
Deadline for the.
Pardon? Do we have a dead?
Town petition is the, um, March third is the meeting, is that right? Something like that.
So, so the.
Deadline for putting something on as an article will, I think it's, I want to say it's the end of, end of January, sometime the end of January, I'm thinking the first is second, yeah. I don't want to say, last year, I think it was like the twenty-seventh, twenty-fifth, yeah, it's.
That rings a bell from when I had to do my, it would have been the same as getting a petition, do you know?
Send stuff out. Sometime before the end of January, toward the end of January.
Yeah. Good catch.
We, we vote by Australian ballot, uh, so we have these deadlines.
Let's get prepared in advance and ballots are, are often mailed and, or people ask them in the mail that can't be present. So it has to be in the timeliness for that.
Is it appropriate to ask if anybody wants to sign?
You can leave it.
Okay.
Or if you want to leave one, or.
And basically, this is.
Not, I mean, I wanted, it was one more comment up here that, uh, Vicky De Zorda had, thank you for raising awareness of this very important environmental issue.
Okay, um, other public comments? Um, we're down to three public members, so anything else the board wants to bring up before we adjourn?
Does anybody on Zoom have any?
Anything to bring up, any public comment? We might make it home early this week.
So, thank you, just, uh, enjoyed watching the presentation and, uh, seeing your well-run, uh, meeting, uh, very good.
Thank you.
Uh, that was, uh, and.
Uh, Kimmon, and he said he had a well-run meeting.
Thank you. Which we done, be happy to make a motion to adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Oh.
Second.
Excuse me, was that you were second, okay, more senior adjourned, all in favor of adjourn, can we say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Wow, this is.
Look at this, it is seven fifty-nine, Doug.
Uh-huh.
Got a ten thirty.